On number E, continued and new business, city clerk's certification that there were sufficient signatures on a referendum petition. Okay, so let me tell you how we're going to handle this part of the meeting so that we all... Wait, wait. The way we're going to do it is, at first, we're going to hear a presentation from our city clerk, who will review everything that has happened regarding the petitions and the certification, and the options associated with the gathering of the signatures. After that, I will call up a representative from the petition gathering organization to speak, and then I will call up a representative from the developer to come up and speak. And then, following both of those two, and it would be one person representing each organization if possible, then, following that, we will take public comment. After that, we will close the public comment, and the council will then have a chance to digest and better understand your questions and concerns, and ask our own questions, and then make comments, and then we'll vote on the four, one of the four proposals. So with that, I do want to make certain that I invite anyone who wishes to speak before the council on this agenda item, to please submit these yellow speaker cards at this time, so that you can all be heard and we can get the benefit of hearing what you have to say. With that, our city clerk, Mr. Byron Pope.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Brucker, Vice Mayor Fenton, and city council members. On May 29, 2008, a referendum petition was filed with the city by Larry Larson, representing the Citizens' Right to Decide Committee. Pursuant to the Elections Code of the State of California, Section 9240, the Los Angeles County Registry Recorder, at the request of the city clerk, has examined the petition and determined that the petition is signed by not less than 10% of the registered voters of the city of Beverly Hills. Therefore, I, Byron Pope, the city clerk of Beverly Hills, certify the total number of valid signatures on the referendum against a resolution passed by the city council, Resolution Number 08-R-12601, is 2,574, and the minimum required to qualify for filing is 2,075. The California Elections Code, Section 9241, allows for the legislative body, which in this matter is the city council, to entirely repeal Resolution 08-R-12601, submit the matter to the voters either at the November 4, 2008, general election, by requesting consolidation with Los Angeles County's Board of Supervisors, at the next regular municipal election on March 3, 2009, or at a special election call for that purpose. And I may answer any questions you have on the certification.
Okay, thank you. With that, who from the petition gatherers? Marilyn Gallop, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, council members. In only 20 days, two-thirds of the time allotted, and carrying petitions weighing 15 and 1/2 pounds each, we were able to obtain enough signatures to qualify the Beverly Hilton Hotel referendum for the ballot. We could have obtained a great many more signatures, but there were voters who were afraid to sign, fearing retaliation from Mr. Alajim or City Hall. It is likely that these voters, along with the majority who signed the referendum petition, will vote no against the Hilton's three high-rise towers. However, in order to eliminate a greater fracturing of the community, and to save the city time, money, and acrimony, we would prefer that the city council repeal its vote in order to avoid an election. We invite the developer, Mr. Alajim, to resubmit a new development project to the Planning Commission that is more compatible to Beverly Hills. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. And the developer's representative, Mr. Milstein? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, honorable council members. George Milstein, representing Oasis. We look forward to the council's action tonight to place this matter on the November ballot. We look forward to the confirmation by the voters of the action taken by the city council in approving this project. And with that, we hope we move forward tonight with approving that resolution to place it on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, we are moving along quite quickly. Again, if anyone wishes to speak before the council, please submit your cards. I do see some people out in the hallway, so please let them know that, that once we close the public hearing, the public hearing will be closed. Up first is Red Richmond. Red, I'd like to invite you up because I know you have your two kids here, and I want to... Okay, that's good. Well, wait till you get to my microphone. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Ms. Briskman. Thanks for not taking notes. I just wanted to say, it was very difficult really gathering all those signatures, and it took a lot of time and effort, and a group that really clung together, and it was David and Goliath. We had so much working against us, a campaign from PR, that after working for Rogers and Cal, and I had never seen anything like that in my life, with daily onslaughts of mailers telling people how horrible we were. We're citizens and residents of Beverly Hills. We're your neighbors. We're your friends. We are not poison. We are not spreading snake oil. We're doing nothing but trying to hear and make our voices heard. I just have something on my cellphone, unfortunately I have to put my glasses on, as I always do. Because while we were gathering signatures, a gentleman from Oasis, or I guess, Mr. Alajim sent someone in front of the school. I took a picture of him. I took a video of him. This gentleman was actually standing there. I will pass this around if you'd like to see him. I can also play the video for you. He was loitering in front of the school, watching us talk to the parents at the school. By the way, the JPA was very afraid of all of you in getting their money, so the PTA was very frightened. They were trying to balance money against being for our project. But this gentleman was there for days, watching us. I have video on him. I asked him why a man without a child at that school was loitering in front of the school. I asked Police Officer Vito and Officer Pompoi to please keep an eye on this man. We don't know if this gentleman was ever checked out, what his background was, if he has any kind of report on him, or anyone did a background check, but he's standing in front of El Rodeo every day, watching the citizens of Beverly Hills. I don't believe he's a citizen of Beverly Hills. So I just want you to note that it took a lot of time and effort to get those signatures, and we are very serious, and we want to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Red. Okay, Tom Roberts? Good evening, sir.
Before I start, I would just like to say that I certainly hope this council does not vote on the general plan. I don't trust it. I says, before I start, I would just like to say, I certainly hope this council doesn't vote on the general plan because I don't trust it. As I've said before, and I'll reiterate again, and quite frankly, the water pipe under 9900 is another classic example, is when you people vote on this, what do you know? That's what I'd like to know. What do you really know? I've stood here before and showed you all these little pictures that they submit of all the parkland, one after another, parkland, one after another, parkland, all of them fraudulent, all of them altered, and none of them with a disclaimer. I also showed you, the last time I was here, a picture of the Waldorf Astoria that they exhibit, with the same perspective, this is the actual height of the building. Okay? Where the hell are the buildings of all the representations? Do you know what the buildings look like? I don't think anybody else does. Everybody thinks they're getting new parks. This is another one, the Waldorf Astoria. It's not in the, it's not in the projected picture that they propose. Here's the height of that building, twice as tall as the Hilton. Where is it in the picture? This is deceit. Waldorf Astoria, is it going to be another architectural deckel masterpiece? I hardly think so. Do we need another Waldorf Astoria? Is it really a piece that we're missing? I don't think so. We've got plenty of great hotels. What I really like to know is this: you make decisions that are really quite contrary to the general plan, and that what most people in the city think the city's supposed to be. How do you make those decisions, and what information do you have? I would like to know if I could be privy to and examine all of the data and information that was presented to the city council, in order that they made that decision. I'd like to know how you make your decision. Is it possible that that could be open to me, so I can have complete access to what you saw and what you know? We'd like to know. I'd like to know.
Well, thank you very much, and just for the record, everything that the council saw, the public also was made aware of, and was available to the public. Every page, document, drawing, illustration, everything was available on any of the projects that the council votes on. So I'm glad you asked that question, because I think it's important, because if you had that question...
Where do I access it?
You can access that through the city clerk's office, at the public library, even online. So, it's, it's available. So, but I really want to thank you for asking that question, because if you had that question, I'm sure other people also have.
The other thing I'd like to know is this, is the last time I was here, I showed you the renderings. The renderings of the buildings that were rendered in blue, the same color as the sky. They're deceitful, they're dishonest, and they're inaccurate. I mean, how much of these things did the council believe? The entire Wilshire Boulevard frontage is virtually on the property line.
Okay.
It's not a bunch of parks. All right? I mean, does the city council know this?
I, I think that's, that's something that each city council member can answer for themselves.
Well, would you please?
Well, I think everybody will, will make their comments when it is their time to make their comments, but I do appreciate you sharing your comments. But we, we will answer everything that any of these questions that are posed before us. You can be assured of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Alma Ordaz?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Alma Ordaz, and I'm a Beverly Hills resident, and I was hoping that this evening, the city council could clarify some issues which are important to our community, and in particular to residents such as myself, who are El Rodeo parents. From the many PTA meetings which I attended, it had been my specific understanding that demolition for the Robinsons May and Hilton project would begin over the summer break. It is now my understanding that the Robinsons May project has been delayed because of a water pipe issue, and of course, we now know the Hilton project because of the voter referendum. My questions are twofold. First of all, was this water pipe issue known to the city council, when this project was rushed through approval, and was it made known to the public? And secondly, are there going to be any other surprises headed our way, which we should now know about? The school board, under the leadership of Myra Lurie and Nushir Mishkani, have shown exemplary commitment and dedication to our children. They have gone out of their way in making themselves and other city officials available to answer our questions, and most importantly, have gone out of their way to clear up the many misconceptions and falsehoods which were sold as part of the Hilton marketing campaign. Because I know this council's commitment to our city, and most importantly, our children, there are some questions that I would like to ask. Since it appears that demolition will not take place until the school year, can we then count on your support, particularly that of Mr. Delshad and Ms. Briskman, who so wholeheartedly supported this expansion? Can we count on you to go back to the Hilton, and go back to Candy and Candy, and increase the nuisance fees that will be paid to our schools? Will you also go back to the Hilton, and back to Candy and Candy, and reassess the real impact of what demolition will mean during the school year? And lastly, and most importantly, will you go back to the Hilton, and back to Candy and Candy, and make sure that every environmental precaution can be taken to safeguard our community and our most precious commodity, our children? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, Dr. Matt Finnerman?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Since she mentioned our name, I thought it would be right to respond.
Matthew, can you just hold up for one second?
No, no, no.
That's okay.
You, you mentioned my name and Mrs. Briskman, so I thought, I want to give you my commitment that I will go back to Candy and Candy, and find out what's happened there, why didn't I not know about that water. We did not know, and the city manager, I guess, did not know, the planning commission did not know, but I will not allow them to, if I have the power to do it of non-school during the school time, so it's got to be sometime, when the schools are closed. As you can see, our commitment to the children, bypassing a very strong JPA, we do care about our children, our children, your children, our children are the same. Mrs. Briskman?
We don't know any more than you do about this water pipe. We just know what we've been told. I don't think... Excuse me.
Alma, Alma.
What is, the condition along the way in these projects, until they open up walls, open up, dig into the ground, frequently we get construction impacts that we, we're not aware of. However, none of this is, is something that is life-threatening, but what it is, is going to require... Excuse me. But what we will do is, the mayor is going to be meeting with Candy and Candy and the staff, to discuss how this will affect the schedule, when it would be most appropriate for, in staff's opinion, this construction to, and demolition to take place. It, it could be delayed another whole year and be next summer. So, they are going to sit down, they, they have made arrangements to get together, they have an appointment, and once the mayor and the staff discuss it with them, then we'll know more. That's on the Candy and Candy project. On the Hilton project, we're here tonight to certify the signature gathering, and to choose whether to or how to set this for a vote. So if it goes to a vote, we won't know anything about the Hilton construction or demolition until such time as we know there's going to be a project. So at that time, we will again evaluate it and arrange a schedule that is most convenient for the, the schoolchildren at that time. So it would be impossible for us to give the answers to you specifically, except to tell you that you have this council's commitment to, just like you had it before, that the children were our first priority, and that everything would be done as is reasonably possible, to, to make sure that the schedule protects them in, in the most efficient way. Well, if you were constructing in your own home, you might have, once you started the construction, you might dig into the ground and find something that you didn't know was there. It's done all the time. As the city manager said earlier, and you may not have been here, the, the pipe was known to be there, but it had not been unearthed for many, many years, and there was no way to really know the condition of the pipe, how brittle it was, how, how likely it was that it could withstand the, the weight and, and the movement of the construction. And so it was determined by the utility, of which we have no control over. I believe that to be true. We, we don't decide whether this pipe is fit for service or not, and the utility company are the ones who determine that it was not fit and needed to be replaced.
Okay, thank you, Alma. Okay, Nancy, did you have a comment?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to assure the community that the transparency of this council is first and foremost, in my mind, and my commitment to this community. I have said repeatedly, and I will reiterate now, that sometimes when you get on this bullet train, it's not what's in the report, it's what isn't there, that the council isn't aware of, that becomes problematic. The council did not know about the DWP, the Metropolitan Water District, District Pipe, or the condition that it was in. It became aware, we became aware of it, and, as did the community simultaneously. Consequently, construction was halted. Does that mean we're going back to them? You bet. You bet. There is no way that I would put any child, not one child, will be put in jeopardy because we didn't know that a pipe was there. You have my commitment on that, and that's all I can give you. You have my word on that. The only thing, when I look at a document, and I read that EIR from cover to cover, it wasn't there. And it always worries me about, you've heard me say it from the first day, it's not what's there, I always wonder, what isn't there? And I try and think about all the things that aren't there, but the, the numbers are endless. You can only speculate and guess. So we found one that wasn't, and now we're dealing with it. So we're going to move forward. But you have my commitment, we will do the best job we can.
Larry Weiner?
Well, perhaps I could help shed a little bit of light on the issue, and I know George Chavez, who would be able to do a better job than I, is not here tonight because he's out of town. I don't know if others here in the chambers might add something, but perhaps it's worthwhile to say that the pipe in question was always intended to be relocated to Murph Griffin Way. That was shown on the plans, it was analyzed as part of the EIR. What became, what we became aware of subsequent to that, was that the MWD would require that relocation prior to demolition, rather than during construction, which was the original assumption. So it wasn't as if no one knew the pipe was there, it wasn't as if no one knew that the pipe needed to be moved, it was simply the timing of that relocation that the MWD later changed, or changed the plans for the timing of that relocation. So that, that's the issue.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, Dr. Finnerman, thank you for your patience, and for caring for patients.
My question, in fact, this discourse is healthy, and that's why, in part, what I came to speak about. I am speaking not as an officer in the Beverly Hills North Homeowners Association, or member of the Municipal League, or supporter of the Citizens' Right to Decide Committee. I'm speaking as a physician and as a resident since 1951. As relates to what we've just been discussing, public health issues, will, one question was, will the demolition for both projects be put off until the school year is out in 2009? Secondly, the current plans, as I understand it, are for monitoring for pollution once a week, however, the school board wants it done, of course, daily, which is what's appropriate. Other questions are, how will you also notify the adult neighbors, such as the 95-year-old on my block, right across the street from the Hilton, or as she has announced, Ruth Kraft has respiratory problems? Are they expected to carry around pagers or cellphones, so they can be notified, as the students are, when the pollution levels are too high? Second point, the success of the referendum in spite of the massive disinformation campaign by the Hilton and its agents. For example, the manager of the pavilions, Junior, received complaints of harassment until he found out that it was an agent of the Hilton calling on his cellphone. Worse was the Hilton's agents with cameras following the signature gatherers to try to disallow signatures from well-meaning Beverly Hills citizens of, if the 15 and 1/2 pounds of books were not handed to each and every potential signature. The city attorney himself said that he drafted the ordinance to include unnecessary volumes to facilitate any future research, and Mayor Brucker, at the Municipal League Community Meeting, stated in his expertise as a printer, it was not physically possible to bind together 15 and 1/2 pounds of documents. Another misrepresentation is the pretense that money for pollution abatement at El Rodeo is for education. No matter what you call it, if you want to claim otherwise, ask school board members Lurie, Mishkani, and Goldberg, who I spoke with at meeting at El Rodeo, and they were first speechless, then incensed, that such an Orwellian misrepresentation by titling it as, or by not specifying that it's only for abatement, they said that everybody involved with the project understood that that's what the money is needed for, that's what it would be used for. That's what they said. There's also the fallacy that the expansion of the Hilton well beyond what the planning commission deemed appropriate is opposed by, quote, "a handful of people who are against everything." The over 3,200 Beverly Hills citizens, from across the full spectrum of residents, who signed the petition, say that that misrepresentation is wrong. As a perspective, even if you only count the 2,574 certified signatures, 500 more than required is, can I have about 30 more seconds?
Sure, please.
Is virtually the same number as, as a perspective, has voted for Mr. Delshad, though less than voted for Councilmember Krasny. Signature gatherers have said that easily another 1,000 said they would have signed except for fear of reprisal, not only from the Hilton, but also from the Beverly Hills City Government, because of perceived retribution against supporters of the montage referendum. As we say in this part of town, even this perception is shanda. It has been said by members of the city council, they knew what the residents want. Now, in fact, you do know two things. The citizens of Beverly Hills are against this overdevelopment as currently pushed through like a tank. Secondly, know that the citizens are paying attention to what you're saying, what you do. You have said that the planning commission did not consider the financial impact on the Hilton. It is not the obligation for the residents of Beverly Hills to bail out the Hilton's overspending when they knew the codes. There is a difference between what is your right as a legislator, and what is right under your oath of office for the privilege of representing, as a representative of the people. The Hilton has indicated that they will sue to keep, against the referendum, to keep it off the ballot. Everyone in this room should be incensed at any attempt by the Hilton or their agents to thwart the will of the citizens of Beverly Hills. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, doctor. Woody Clark, Woody?
Mr. Mayor, I noticed that if you mention a council person's name, they respond. Is that the protocol? So if I mention names, people will respond, anyway?
Well, they have a choice, but we're, we're trying not to. We're trying to hear what you're having to say, and then...
Well, let me start off then.
Give me that opportunity, so please go ahead.
I wanted to take a very strong exception, Ms. Briskman, with what you said, when you praised, as I quote you, "if this measure is on the ballot." I think that's a very disruptive, if not statement to make, and I think it really violates the democracy that we live in here in Beverly Hills, and in this country. And I want to take exception to it, because this has got to be on the ballot. This is up to the citizens. There are, I actually found it when I talked to people, after escaping from, if you will, photographers or people in back of me, as I went to get some signatures, a lot of people did in fact want this, that it was very easily to get a cross-section of citizens here in Beverly Hills to sign the referendum. And I'm very strongly in favor that we all vote on this measure. If you, for some reason, decide, for whatever reason, that it's not, then I would urge you to, to do something I had mentioned to you, Mr. Brucker, a long time ago. There should be a moratorium on building in this city, fast and clear. It gets to some of what you've heard. It specifically gets to what you've already heard. There needs to be an audit on what's happened so far in the city, in terms of behavior, whether it has to do with reports, or false information, or not all the information that got to you with members of the city council. And I would argue that even further than that, I would imagine that people at the state government level, probably the Attorney General's office, would want to look into this matter if you don't take action about it and do something. And I would urge you to do that immediately. I think that unfortunately, one of the problems here is infrastructure. And I know that Ms. Briskman and Ms. Krasny know that I volunteered and wanted to be on the Public Works Commission for just that reason, because I've got a strong background in this area and I'm concerned about it, and I'm still concerned about it, and I think that if, even with a referendum and a vote, we still have a problem if this project goes through and goes forward. So I want to urge you to think very seriously that this should be brought before everyone in this community to vote on, that probably the best time is during the general election that's coming up, and I would recommend if you, for whatever reason, decide not to, then... then stop all of this building now and please get your ducks in order, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brisbane?
Dr. Clark, I, I just want to clarify for you that I actually agree with you one hundred percent. It's just that we have an option before us that does not include that. So, in other words, we have three options before us tonight, and, and one of them would be not to put it on the ballot. So, I was just stating it as it is before us. If you look at the agenda, you will see that that is so.
Yeah, I noticed that, but you only picked that one, so I just...
No, no, I didn't.
I, I, I think that's the first time we've agreed on it.
No, I did not, I did not. I said whether we put it to a vote or not to a vote, um, no, I, I didn't. And whether it's on the general election or a special election, no, we have all those options before us. But I actually agree with you. I do think it should be put to a vote, and I do think it should be the general election, unless I hear something for the remaining speakers or for my fellow council members that tells me something else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Marilyn, I, I have your card, but I think this was from your previous. Is that correct, when you spoke earlier? Okay, thank you. Rose Norton? Rose?
As a resident of this city for fifty years, you know I have always been consistent about overdevelopment. I have put my efforts where my mouth was because this is something I truly believe in. Whether you agree with me or not, know that I have always been honest in my beliefs, and I have always tried to express them fairly. Uh, the first thing I wanted to discuss was the Ninety-Nine Hundred, the appearance of the project. They have a barricade up right now that has a lot of dirt behind it. It looks like a third-world country's dead linens hanging on an old fence. And I walked by the new SLS Hotel on La Cienega, and they have a similar type of barricade, but it's done well. It doesn't look like that. And I think if we're going to have to look at this much longer, uh, I feel like I'm in Tijuana. I mean, it, it really is, is quite, and I mean nothing against Tijuana, but this is not, this is not up to Beverly Hills standards. All right. Then, the next thing is that I, I would like to, uh, express my appreciation to the young people in the community and the old ones who, pardon me, schlepped that fifteen pounds thing and got signatures. It was very difficult. I only got forty, but there were people who got hundreds. And I think that whether you agree with them or you don't agree with them, we really deserve to thank them for expressing their wishes for our city. And I, I would like to thank particularly Larry Larson and Marilyn Gallup and Nancy Barth, who did such a fantastic job. I really, I really feel that much. And the third thing that I would like to mention is that, of course, it's going to be a tremendous appeal fight for us because the Hilton has unlimited resources. I think this thing said sum up, and I will try to.
No, take, take your time.
And the, the amount of money that we will have to, uh, fight is, is really quite insurmountable, and we're going to need a lot of people to get out and walk. But the most important thing, having been on the Planning Commission for eight years and dealt with many developers, including, I am proud to say, I was there when Barney's was developed, and I think we did a wonderful job on Barney's. But the problem was that there was a certain degree of arrogance with the Beverly Hilton. I heard you, Mr. Brucker, ask them a question, and they, would they go back and consider something? They said absolutely not. I mean, there is always a willingness of people who really want to be a part of our community to cooperate with us. I saw it on the Montages', uh, side. When they were building their hotel, they did cooperate with us. So, I think if we could get rid of some of that arrogance, we would all be better off. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rose. Up next, Barbara, uh, Cristobal? Sorry, I'm having a hard time reading her writing, so when you come on up, you can share with us your last name. Welcome. And if you'd like, you can go right to this, this table right over here with that microphone.
Hello, Orwin. Kristal?
Oh, I'm sorry, what was your name? You're on.
Kristal?
Kristal, welcome.
Wonderful to be here, wonderful to talk to all of you.
Okay, can you speak directly into the microphone, if you can?
I'm sorry?
You're doing fine. Go ahead.
Um, I'm, I've come here as someone... ...in a... Um, in a... I don't. I've been following all this by coming to meetings, by reading the Courier, by reading letters from citizens, by knowing what's going on, just by word of mouth. Um, this isn't the Beverly Hills I know. The Beverly Hills I've always known is loving and caring and concerned about each other and for what's best for us. And... I'm, there's so much anger here from so many people. And when I say anger, I mean really deep anger that I've never seen exhibited in this city before. And that disturbs me because the reason I moved here was it was paradise. And I know it isn't, but... My question is this. It seems, in my mind, Ninety-Nine Hundred is getting somewhat preferential treatment to the Hilton project. Now, if this is not so, it's because of my ignorance that I don't understand the situation. But they're doing, I mean, they are raising asbestos, they're destroying buildings. It's affecting Elrodale School and the neighbors. We don't hear anything about that, but we hear all about the Hilton. I mean, that's just one issue I'm bringing up. So, I'm wondering, why is there a disparity between the treatment of these two projects?
Well, you, you have stumped me. Um, basically, the council voted to approve both of the projects. The petition gatherers gathered petition signatures sufficient to put on the referendum, um, enough signatures for the Hilton project. So, that's really what we're discussing today as far as any preferential treatment for one project versus another. I think that's a very individual, uh, opinion, which I, I certainly respect, uh, from you. But I don't know whether it has any solid validity from the five council members, but each of them can speak on that if they would so choose.
Okay. I, I'm sorry.
Um, Kristal, is it?
Yeah.
Barbara, Kristal.
Barbara.
Barbara.
Anything.
Uh, thank you very much for coming up. I, I agree with your perception that there was, uh, some disparity in, in pushing and rushing the Ninety-Nine Hundred. In fact, for the last week of that, I and Nancy Krasny asked for two weeks' delay in approving that, and I could not, we could not get the vote to do that. At the same time, you should be asking that question from all the, uh, signature gatherers. Hardly any of them came here to discuss or object to the Ninety-Nine Hundred. Very few of them. Very few.
Okay, please.
Very few came. I don't know why. All I'm telling you, from my perception, there was something in the city that they wanted to con- concentrate on one project and not on the other, whereas both of them were at the same magnitude of building. That's my view.
To me, they're exactly the same project, types of project. A destruction of something, an erection of something else close to schools. And both are going to be enhancements of our city. So, I believe in both of them. At a previous City Council meeting, I do recall hearing, if I recall correctly, that when we were approached by Candy and Candy...
Okay, take another, another thirty seconds to wrap it up, if you don't mind.
When Candy and Candy approached us, we were so overblown by their name, their esteem, their fame, that we were so flattered that the project kind of went okay. It was pushed through. And for whatever reason, the Hilton doesn't have the distance, the cl- whatever. Um, I don't know any of this because, as I said, I'm in a... Um...
Thank you.
And that's all I had to say. And just one question to make. May I meet with you for five minutes after the meeting?
Anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ruth Kraft? Ruth? Good evening, Ruth.
I nearly wanted to speak, uh, not against what this lady was talking about, but we did try to fight the Ninety-Nine Hundred. We just didn't have enough money to do the Hilton and Ninety-Nine Hundred. So, we chose to do the Hilton because it was so much bigger. That's why.
Okay, thank you. Steve Weinglass? Hi, Steve.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council people. I was inspired to speak while I was sitting there because, um, it strikes me as this. When we decide, or if it's decided, to put this on a referendum, the amount of propaganda that was floated into this community by the Hilton during this brief referendum struggle, the lies, the incredible statements, never, you know, much statement about what they could do for the community, but rather fear campaigns. So, if you have a choice tonight to strike that, if these people go back and get a viable plan that fits into the general plan as it is, you could save this community from a lot of stress. What's going to happen if you okay this referendum to go on in November on a ballot? It's going to be very ugly. It's going to be more fear. It's going to be more separation as a community. And our community is going to be trying to defend itself against great, great propaganda. You're going to polarize a lot of people. When I came here last, I spoke about the, um, the class it took for people to maintain the general plan for the last thirty years as far as development was concerned, to keep this community beautiful, to keep it a village, to keep it together. The stress you could put on this community right now over this polarization should be obvious. We did get enough votes in a short amount of time, not even the full thirty days. Um, I just hope you think about that in your, in your decision tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, I have no more cards. I do want to mention, um, Monique, Marissa Lukens, you, that was you, right? Yes, um, you presented a card, but you're not speaking on this issue. So, if you don't mind, right after this subject, I'll take, I'll take you. Okay, would that be okay? All right, so don't let me forget. As soon as this issue is voted on, we go onto the next agenda item, I'll take you right beforehand. Okay, you're welcome. All right, I'm gonna, going to now turn this back over to our city clerk, who will articulate the four options that the council has to deliberate this evening. And then, following that, um, I'll ask for council questions and then council comments, and then we'll see if we can, um, make a motion. Byron?
Thank you again, Mayor Brucker and City Council. For item E2, a referendum petition was filed with the city on May twenty-nine, two thousand eight, relating to Resolution Zero Eight-R-Dash-Twelve-Six-O-One, which amended the Beverly Hills general plan to enable the revitalization of the Beverly Hilton Hotel site with a new luxury hotel, condominiums, and open space. The election call allows for the City Council to do one of the four following options. Number one, you can entirely repeal the resolution, noting the resolution may not again be enacted by the City Council for a period of one year after the date of its repeal, and the cost associated with that is nothing. Number two, request consolidation with the upcoming statewide general election and submit the matter to the voters on November four, two thousand eight. Cost estimate to be fifty-five thousand dollars. Number three, submit the matter to the voters at the March third, two thousand nine regular general election for our municipal. The cost will increase from our already budgeted estimate of one hundred and fourteen thousand fifty dollars to an estimate one hundred and forty thousand dollars, which will be an additional twenty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars above what we've already budgeted for the March election. Or four, submit the matter to the voters at a special election called for just that purpose. The cost for our special election is estimated to be one hundred and twenty thousand dollars as a standalone election. These calls have not been budgeted in the city clerk's office operating budget for this fiscal year. Should the council choose to call a special election for this item, staff recommends that the City Council designate an election date after November four, two thousand eight, and prior to February third, two thousand nine, to avoid overlap with the absentee ballot period for our March third election, which will begin February ninth, two thousand nine. Staff has prepared three alternate sets of resolutions for City Council consideration. The first one is item E2A, which would repeal Resolution Number Zero Eight-R-Dash-Twelve-Six-O-One. The second, items E2B, would call a special election and place the measure on the November four, two thousand eight, general election ballot. At present, to note, the November four, two thousand eight, general election will also include voting for the President of the United States, Assembly Congressional Senate seats, and at least eleven qualified state measures at this time. The third, item E2C, would call a special election and set a date other than November four, two thousand eight, for an election. If the council chooses this option, then staff requests that the council designate the date on which the council wishes to hold the election. the date on which the council wishes to hold the election. Finally, if the council wishes to consolidate the election with the March third, two thousand nine city council election, then staff will return with appropriate resolutions for you on June, July fifteenth at your next meeting. If the council so chooses to hold an election regarding resolution zero-eight dash R dash twelve-six-oh-one, then you must also make three further choices, which are outlined in your packets and resolutions, regarding setting priorities for filing a written argument regarding a city measure, the filing of rebuttal arguments, and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the measure. Please note that the filing of rebuttal arguments and directing the city attorney to prepare the impartial analysis are optional choices that you can make. And that concludes my staff report.
Okay, thank you, Byron. So in essence, what we have are four choices. We can either repeal it, uh, which means that the vote that we took a month or so ago, uh, would become null and void. Is that correct? Okay, that's option, one of the options. One of the other options is to set this for calendar of, uh, November fourth, which would be the, coincide with the general election, presidential election. The third would be to set our own date, and you gave us some parameters after November fourth and prior to February third.
Correct.
So that they don't overlap and conflict with one another. And then the fourth one would be, um, presumably, uh, the March third election, which we'd have to come back to you for, um, some additional information on. So these are the four, four options that the council has before them. Let me ask my colleagues if they have any questions first, and then, following, uh, questions, um, and then I will go back again and we'll ask for comments and where you're positioned on it. So this right now is just for clarification questions to either Byron or to Larry Weiner. I have one question, so, but I'll...
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, this is to you, Larry, if you don't mind. Um, I had been asked, I believe I know the answer to this already, but I've been asked, uh, and I would just like to articulate it in public so that you can answer it. Uh, I have been asked whether we could, as a council, if we so choose, um, to vote for a component of the Hilton project, um, but, and sort of isolate the three major components, which would be, let's just say, the Waldorf, Building A and Building B, condo A, condo B, and the Waldorf, uh, whether, if the council were to say, we support hypothetically condo B and Waldorf, but not condo A or some variation, that, would, would that be an option if both the Hilton folks and the petition gathering organization both agreed to close the gap and, and move forward with that type of project? Or are we bound at this vote to just look at the four options that Byron articulated?
Tonight, you are bound to look at the four options that, uh, Mr. Pope has articulated. If the council repealed the resolution, or if the, uh, resolution is defeated, if it's placed on the ballot, um, at that time, the council could look at, uh, options that would be substantially different than what was repealed or what was defeated at the, at the ballot. Um, but at this time, tonight, these are the only four options that are available.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, Nancy?
If the council repealed its decision, would the developer have the opportunity to come back with, let's say, the planning commission's version of this project within a short period of time and present it and move forward?
The, the rule is that if the city council were to repeal the resolution this evening, um, that the developer could not come back with the same project or a substantially similar project for a period of one year. The question then would be, what is presented by the developer, and is that substantially similar or sufficiently different from the project that was repealed, um, in order to allow that to go forward within the one-year period? And we would have to take a look at what the project was that was proposed to analyze that.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
All right, let's see if there are any other questions. If there aren't, um, Nancy, would you like to, um, go forward with your comments and where you are favoring?
Yes.
Go ahead.
First of all, the referendum process, which is a fundamental right in our democracy, has made me examine why I'm sitting here today. Although this is a nonpartisan seat, I have come to the realization that I must examine the fundamental reasons why I was chosen to sit here and represent this community. My colleagues feel that representative government means that they are elected to study the material and issues, then decide what is best for the community. In my examination, I have come to realize that my view differs greatly. I feel that I was elected to represent your voice and speak for the community, not my voice alone. My voice is the sound of a consensus of informed community members from throughout the city, representing residential and business interests, owners and renters citywide. This referendum, as I heard tonight, and I had already written, is not about the Hilton. It's not just about the Hilton, although the Hilton is the subject matter of this referendum. This referendum is a wake-up call to the entire council and community regarding the upcoming general plan. The community wants a say in their future without manipulation and spot zoning. This is not about no growth. This is about responsible growth in an orderly manner, where the infrastructure is in place to handle the additional density and mass transit with a residential shuttle system in place to have it workable, so that the city isn't overburdened with unmitigated traffic and congestion. I believe in an individual's right to do what he or she wants with their own property. But I also believe that each of us has purchased our property, knowing the rules and the zoning that is in place. Nobody held a gun to our head and made us make a purchase that we didn't want. If a project doesn't pencil out, then don't do it now. I sit here at your pleasure. I serve at your pleasure. You show respect for the chair I sit in, and as your elected representative, I will try at every turn to earn that respect. Just as our city manager said to me one day, "You salute a soldier in uniform. Although you may not like the man or the woman, you always show and give your respect to the uniform." Each council member has earned your respect, or they would not be here. So I ask you to remember that as you address each of us. I must say that I feel this referendum is about more than just the Hilton. It is about the general plan. Certain controversial elements need to be on the ballot before this entire community is changed irreversibly. In closing, I just have one really serious question. We have our planning commission about to address the general plan, and I brought the newspaper clipping in here. It's going to discuss it, it's going to release the general plan to the public on August seventh, and the public, it will be open for public viewing. But the PC is going to be commenting on it, uh, in July, I, in, I think it's July tenth, tenth and whatever, it is two, two weeks in July, two, two days in July. And then it comes back on September eleventh and the twenty-fifth to the, for public hearings. But the point is, we should all be looking at the general plan while the planning commission is looking at it. It shouldn't be released after they've looked at it. You should be looking at what they're looking at while it's going on. So I would like the Hilton to be taken off the ballot and the general plan to be put on, because this is the real critical issue of what we're really looking at. Ninety-nine hundred, the Hilton, William Morris, all of these things are individual projects that should have been looked at as a component of the general plan and the direction that we're going in. This is how I have always felt, and I think this is how the community feels. If you differ with me, tell me. I will always listen to you. Thank you.
Nancy, uh, just a clarification question. Nancy, a clarification question. We do not have before us the general plan to be put on the, on the ballot. So, well, let me just finish. What we have are four options here. Do you have one option that you are favoring to support? Because those are the options that we are, that are presented before us to, to vote on.
All right, I would either leave the Hilton up for a ballot vote, or totally pull it off and let it come back, uh, after the general plan has been adopted. And by the way, here is the ad in the paper, as promised. The general plan release date is August seventh, the meetings for the planning commission are July tenth and twenty-fourth, in the afternoons at one-thirty, and the public hearings for the planning commission are September eleventh and twenty-fifth, time to be announced. It comes to the city council November fifth and November eighteenth. I just think we're going about it backwards. I would like really to be orderly. I don't want to run before I've learned how to walk. And I think that the, the whole concern with the community, we've given these people a, an ungodly task of lugging around these enormous boxes, uh, that must have weighed twenty-five pounds by the time they get done with the cart. I was gone. But during that time, they had one weekend where it was over a hundred degrees, one weekend where it poured rain, and yet they still got all of the signatures. Under the most adverse conditions, they prevailed. That says there is something fundamentally that we as a council aren't hearing, and we better listen. We serve at their pleasure, or we're not going to be serving much longer.
Okay, uh, thank you. Nancy, um, you gave us two options. One was you would, you would support a repeal, to repeal the vote. The other was to put it on the ballot. Now, on the ballot, there are three date choices. One is November fourth, one is March third, and one is a date uncertain, but sometime in between the two. Which one of those three would you favor?
Uh, I'm, I'm open to what the, what the majority of the council, uh, can I think about that and hear what the, the council members have to say? I just, first, I would rather have it be repealed, so that the developer has an opportunity to come back in, not be penalized, and re-present, and give the community something that they want. And we don't have the opportunity to present just the Waldorf Astoria and a smaller condominium project, but we might get that presented to us at a later date.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. No, no, you cannot, but thank you for asking, though. But I'm sorry. Jimmy, would you care to comment?
Okay. Uh, I sort of agree with Nancy that this was a great, uh, feat for the people that carried on this, uh, enormous job of gathering so many signatures. I think, uh, what they presented meant a lot to the people that they talked to. Uh, if I remember, the name was Citizen Rights to Decide, right? Uh, meaning that they wanted the citizens to decide on this project and not the council. So, uh, looking at that one, uh, any other choice but putting it on the ballot, as Mr. Woody Clark said, on a time where a lot of people would come, which is November fourth, if I didn't go along with that, it would be a slap in the face of the people that decided to put it on the ballot. So of all the choices that I've looked at, uh, I think the only one that makes sense, and that's, that was the decision of the gatherer, of the, of the signature gatherer, was Citizen Rights to Decide. So we have to give them the decision and let them decide. So the best time to do that would be November, and I salute them for getting the votes to do that, and, uh, let's, uh, let's see what happens in November fourth. That would be my judgment.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy.
Well, I don't have a speech prepared, but, um, I feel very similarly to Councilmember Delshad. It is the citizen's right to decide after they have gone to the, um, huge effort to collect those signatures. So I think that it's very important that we do let the citizens decide. And I think November fourth makes sense for a lot of reasons, but in particular because the voter turnout should be so substantial, um, not to mention that it's probably the most economical way to do this. But, and, and it's the quickest. And the truth is, I think that staying aligned with Stephen's feeling, that there's always a lot of emotion and passion with these kinds of things, I think the quicker that we can do it, the better it will be. And so I believe that November fourth is the best time. And, um, I, I think, as, as Jimmy says, to do anything less would be, would be completely disregarding the, uh, the effort, uh, that was, uh, taken on by these people. So I would support putting it on the ballot for November the fourth.
Thank you, Linda. Frank?
I agree with him. Okay, before, before you make a motion, can I make my comment? Thank you. Um, well, I, I also agree that, uh, well firstly, you know, it was a, a Herculean, uh, task to get the signatures in, in twenty days, uh, because that's all the time they had left, uh, to gather the signatures, the petitioners. So I, I commend them and their efforts and all the people that, um, were part of that, that effort. This is, you know, the process, the American process, and it, it's something that's provided by law. And we're watching the process work and work effectively. It's a check and balance system that we have. I do have to admit, however, that I was inclined to see whether there would be some support to repeal, uh, the, um, well, um, hold on, let me just finish. Okay, I love you too, Mom. No, I'm kidding. Um, I, I do think, I'm just kidding. I do think that, um, that, you know, with repealing the vote, uh, when we had a, you know, Five-O, uh, planning commission that, um, did not support the current project in a split council three-two, that it was, it was certainly very much right on, on the edge, and it, it couldn't have been a closer vote, obviously. Uh, my, my reason for wanting to see whether my colleagues would entertain repealing the vote was primarily what Stephen had, had mentioned, and that is, that I was trying to eliminate, you know, some of the acrimony in the community and, and the millions upon millions of dollars that may be spent on this, um, campaign could be directed toward the schools, toward the environment, toward the city, toward greening, or anything along those lines. I, I think that that would have, you know, it would have been, you know, a wonderful opportunity to come back with something that maybe was a little bit more modified that all parties could agree, agree with. But I certainly graduated third grade and, and I can count to three, and that there is, is support for it going on the November fifth, November fourth ballot, which I have no problem with at all. I do think if it is going to go on the ballot, that is the date for it. Um, so I would, um, go along with that. But Nancy, you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Uh, when is the soonest it can go on the ballot? Is November, is there a date before November that can go on the ballot?
The soonest is eighty-eight days after today, which is any day, I believe, after October fourth. And since that's so close to November four, it makes sense to do it there and consolidate with LA County versus have our own.
The reason I'm saying that is I have, uh, written a letter, uh, at, a personal letter to, uh, Secretary of State Deborah Bowen, requesting that voter ID be shown when any, uh, ballot is pulled in the city of Beverly Hills and throughout the state. I don't want to invalidate our election, and I think that the time has come. If you have to have, uh, ID to walk down the street and get a jaywalking ticket, you have to have photo ID to get on an airplane, it's time that, for the most fundamental... photo ID to get on an airplane, it's time that, for the most fundamental right of all, to cast a ballot, that you need to have photo ID. And I don't want any kind of funny business going on during this election. So in requesting that, if it goes on, chances are, if it goes on the November ballot, that should hopefully be in place. So I have no problem with that. I just want them to be aware that that has been a request that I've sent in from the city on my behalf.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. It looks like, like we have consensus. So Frank, will you, would you like to make a motion?
I move that the resolution entitled a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beverly Hills calling and giving notice of a special municipal election to be held in the City of Beverly Hills on November 4th, 2008, and requesting that the Board of Supervisors consent to the consolidation of this election, with a statewide general act to be held on the same date be adopted.
Thank you, Frank. Is there a second? Jimmy?
Second motion.
Thank you. Byron, please take roll.
Councilmember Delshad?
Yes.
Councilmember Krasny?
Yes.
Councilmember Briskman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fenton?
Yes.
Mayor Booker?
Yes.
Okay. So there you have it, folks. It will be on November 4th of this year. And Byron, are there some other issues that we have to address?
Yes. If, if it would please the council, I would like City Attorney Weiner to explain to you your options regarding writing, the arguments, rebuttal, and the impartial analysis.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weiner.
Mr. Weiner, before you do that, could you answer the comment that Mrs. Krasny made regarding asking for IDs and all that? Just asking, also asking the city clerk will not do that, right?
That, that's correct. I believe Mrs. Krasny wrote to the Secretary of State acknowledging that it's a state issue.
I just didn't want the public to know that it's going to happen if you ask for it. It's not in our power.
It has nothing to do with the, I just didn't want the city, I didn't want the city to demand it. It had to come from residents, and therefore, as a resident of the City of Beverly Hills, I requested it because I wanted to make sure that we didn't have an invalidated election.
No, I agree with you. In fact, I would write the same thing, too.
Well, actually, we've been working on it, but it's a civil rights violation in a lot of cases, and so there is a lot of, a lot of controversy. So it's been working its way through Sacramento, and it's possible that it's getting closer to getting approved, but I haven't tracked it. We can certainly have our lobbyists do that, and we'll let you know where it's at and what committee and what status of it is. But it is, it is actually, I think, because of time...
It's just been in Indiana and a few other places.
Yes. But in, but in California, it is working its way through, so we can get an update for you as to where it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Larry, do you want to talk about what our options are?
There are two more resolutions regarding this matter on the agenda. The first one would do two, would do two things. One, it would allow for the filing of rebuttal arguments, and this is with reference to the sample ballot. And I'm sure that people are familiar with the sample ballots that they typically see in elections, that there is an argument, typically, there, when a measure is on the ballot, there will be an argument in favor and an argument against. With regard to local measures, the City Council can choose whether or not to allow rebuttal arguments to also be filed. That's item one in that, in that resolution. Adopting the resolution would allow rebuttal arguments to be filed. The second is setting priorities for the filing of the arguments for and against. The resolution would allow the City Council or City Council members, the first priority, to file arguments for and against. The remainder of the priorities would, are then set by state law.
Okay. And so, would that be 2B1, 2B2?
That's 2B2. I'm happy to talk about 2B3 at this time as well, if you would like.
And if you do talk about 2B3 at this time, are we able to make a motion that would cover all...
Excuse me. I misspoke. I just spoke about part of 2B2 and 2B3.
Okay.
2B2? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. But if I may, the issue of filing the rebuttal arguments is in item 2B3.
Okay.
In the, in item 2B2 is the setting of the priorities for filing the written arguments.
Yes.
And is also directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. That is also at the option of the City Council.
What, preparing an impartial?
Correct. Whether or not you wish the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the measure, which would be included in the sample ballot.
Would that impartial analysis be reviewed by the council prior to it being issued, or looked at, you know, analyzed by anyone that...
Well, it's, it's not, it's not a legal opinion. It would be an analysis of the measure, and no, it would not typically be my practice to bring that before the City Council for review. It would be the city attorney's impartial opinion. Not opinion, impartial analysis of the measure.
How was the montage?
The montage did include an impartial analysis. I believe it also included rebuttal arguments, is my recollection.
But that was written by city attorney?
That was written by the city attorney, yes.
Both sides? No.
No, 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 no. There is, there are arguments in favor and arguments against, which are written...
Right. By the opponents and the...
Correct. Would, just out of curiosity, would you have any objection to, prior to presenting a final draft to the council, at least getting the comments from both the applicant, from the petitioners and the developers, just in case they may find some, some inaccuracy interpretation question that you may find was meaningful, so that you could, you know, really look at it? Not that what they would say would be binding on you, but it would be an assist to you, which is something that I would support. And I'm sure the developers and the, and the petitioners would, would both equally welcome having that look, see, and come, and five-day comment period, or whatever you want to impose.
Would that be impartial, then? Want to do that?
Well, I, I think it would, it would give the city attorney... Okay. Well, would that be impartial, was the question?
I'm, I'm giving thought to it. I had, I had not considered that previously. I suppose that at the end of the day, I would not object if the council wished that to be done. In terms of the question of would it still be impartial, my answer would be, as I'm understanding the request, my answer would be yes, as it would be my understanding that I would not be compelled to accept any comments or suggestions that are provided by either side. But if those were simply offered as, I suppose, as comments or suggestions, I could review them and then decide what, if anything, to include in the impartial analysis. But the final decision would be mine and mine alone.
Do you see any downside to that? And you're right, the intent would be that the final decision would be yours and yours alone.
Do I see any downside to it? I suppose that the perception in that case could be that, that impartial analysis was attempted to be influenced by those who have a stake in the matter, the proponents or the opponents of the measure. I think that's the downside.
Well, I can go either way on this. It's just I wanted to bring this forward.
I have a question, then, for Larry. Larry, since the proponents and the opponents will be making statements, do you, as the city attorney, review them for factual information?
No.
So they can make, they could say that they're going to, it's going to cost the city $800 million, or, I mean, you can get any kind of comment in there, whether it be true or untrue.
It is possible for one side or the other to challenge the statements made in the arguments. That would be done through the court. I would not be the arbiter of that. A judge would ultimately be the arbiter of that.
Would each person, would each group see the other person's statement prior to it going into print, so that they might have a chance? Or is that in the rebuttal part of it?
Well, it, well, if the council chooses rebuttal, to allow for rebuttals, then yes, the, at the time that the arguments are submitted, the city clerk will then transmit the argument for to those who submitted the argument against, and the argument against to those who submitted the argument for. The purpose of that is to allow each of them to write the rebuttal to the other side's argument. At that time, there is also a period in which it can be challenged, in which there can be a challenge filed regarding the, the arguments themselves. That would go to the court, though, not to the city clerk, not to, not to the city attorney.
What it is, is that I don't want it to become a game that's litigious. In other words, I don't want the big bucks to play the game and drag it through court. In other words, it's going on the ballot, it's going on the ballot. But I want it to be factual information, and I'd like the facts to be clear and concise and accurate. That's my goal.
I certainly understand that goal. I would share that goal. But I, I think that we could all probably see the problem, or at least, if nothing else, the perception of the problem, if it was the city who was the arbiter of what was or was not factual information. Ultimately, I think the determination, for better or worse, at the state level, is that in this situation, the court, as a completely neutral and removed party, would be the arbiter of what is and isn't factual if someone decided to challenge it.
Okay. Could we, then let me ask one more question. Could we, is it possible that going in ahead of time, we could say to both, both parties, the PAC group and the Hilton people, that if you have a problem, and we find a federal judge or a state judge or whatever, that would hear it without going through big litigious whatever, and say that, like an arbitration kind of a thing, without going through costly stuff? That, that I don't want them spending their, I'd rather have them give the money to the schools. You're going to spend big bucks. I'd rather have it go for something positive.
Well, we cannot compel either party to agree to that, but the suggestion has now been made, and they can certainly agree to it among themselves.
Oh, there's still, oh.
Okay. So why don't, why don't we see if we have a consensus so we can move forward on this? That we are, let, let me just present this and see if you all agree. That we are going to have the city attorney write the impartial...
Analysis.
Analysis. We will not have him show it to either party, but he will use his own best judgment. The buck stops with him, so whatever you say is what goes. We will agree for both parties to submit their position papers, as well as a rebuttal argument, as you had articulated. And is there anything else that we need to form consensus?
There, there, again, there are two items on, in resolution 2B2, the impartial analysis and the priorities for filing the arguments, and then 2B3 would allow the rebuttal.
What do you mean by the priorities?
Again, the, again...
Got it.
On 2B2, there are two elements to the resolution 2B2. One is the filing of the impartial analysis. The second is the setting of priorities for filing the written arguments. If you adopt this resolution, the first priority for filing the written arguments, the argument for and the argument against, is to City Council members. After that, the priorities are set by state law. But up to, yes, up to five people can sign, as the city clerk mentioned, up to five people can sign an argument for or the argument against. But the first priority would go to the legislative body as a whole. I am assuming from the discussions, the legislative body as a whole will not do that. What I am saying is...
That we have the choice of us writing the argument for and argument against among five of us?
The...
Hold on a minute. Let, let, excuse me. I personally don't think that any of us should sign any argument, for or against.
And none...
I think that that is not appropriate.
Well, again, the resolution does not compel that, but if there are competing arguments submitted, there's a system that directs the city clerk how to prioritize those competing arguments. It is up to the council. If the council says, we don't want council members to have priority among the competing arguments, that's fine. We can eliminate that from resolution 2B2.
I would, I would agree with my colleague Linda, that, you know, we all made our positions clear during the vote, so we're the only, the only five people in this whole city who everybody knows their position already. I think we ought to keep it a bit more arms-length in that sense.
I agree.
And let, let the chips fall where they want.
Although, although Mayor Booker?
Yes.
I do have a comment on this. On the impartial statement, since, if you're not going to give it out to...
Either side.
Either side. Maybe we should take, let's say, Councilmember Fenton and myself, knowing how we voted, we each read it, and then we give it back to Larry, we sit in his office, read it.
I think we're all pretty passionate about, about this issue. Why don't we just, I would suggest we just let Larry do it. Otherwise, I think everybody's going to want to be one of those two people. Why don't, Linda, do you want to see if you can lead the motion, and maybe you can do them both at the same time?
Can we do that?
You, you may.
Or I'll do them separately, but, but...
Just do them separately.
How do I note that the council will be not part...
On, on item two, on item 2B2, on that resolution?
Yes.
Section 1 of that resolution is the one that authorizes the City Council members to file arguments. And so you would make a motion to approve that resolution, but...
2B2 is your analysis. Setting priorities, filing.
Right. So I would change the title of that to Resolution of the Council of the City of Beverly Hills, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis, and I would delete section 1 from that resolution.
Okay. So let's try that one first, okay?
If we can do that.
Okay. I move that the resolution entitled a resolution of the Council of the City of Beverly Hills, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis, be adopted.
And that would be without section 1 as presented to the City Council.
Yes.
And I'll second that. Byron?
Councilmember Delshad?
Yes.
Councilmember Krasny?
Yes.
Councilmember Briskman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fenton?
Yes.
Mayor Booker?
Yes.
Okay. Then I will go to, to, Nancy, did you have a comment? I do have a question, though, now. After your impartial statement is made, will the applicant and the PAC have an opportunity to read it? So in their statements, they will have seen the impartial statement.
The impartial analysis is filed at the same time as the arguments in favor or against, or at least it's due to the city clerk on, at the same time as the arguments in favor.
I would respectfully request that each side see the impartial statement prior to filing their statements. I think that gives, since nobody else will have seen it, I think that in, in crafting their statements, it would behoove them to have seen the impartial statement.
Is that a, would there be a problem there? To give them two weeks?
No, like, two weeks, maybe, maybe keeping me here late tonight, but...
No, give them...
I, I, I think we can give them some time. I will finish the impartial analysis before due date, so that they will have an opportunity to review it.
Yeah. It just gives them a chance to develop their argument cogently, and they have a solid coherent response.
I think you've got some consensus here, Nancy.
Okay. But does that need to be included in the resolution? That'll just be a matter of...
I, I will take that as the desire of the City Council.
Okay. All right. So I move that the resolution entitled a resolution of the Council of the City of Beverly Hills, providing for the filing rebuttal arguments for a city measure be adopted.
Second.
Okay. We have first, and a second, Byron, please.
Councilmember Delshad?
Yes.
Councilmember Krasny?
Yes.
Councilmember Briskman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fenton?
Yes.
Mayor Booker?
Yes.
Okay. Byron, a reset? Okay. Thank you all for your participation. Have a good evening, and we will move on. But before we do, oh, no...